Guys like you and I, the breath starts freezing up in the, yeah.
Beer sickles.
Yeah, it's one of those days.
Okay. Okay, one twenty-nine landowner meeting.
So I texted Tyler to see if he was available to come over just for extra information if anyone had any questions, but um, Marge has gotten the notice that Minnesota is sending out to their landowners. Tyler and I had a conversation with the staff in Minnesota in Fairbowl County. Oh, two. I was gonna bring it up in board discussion last week and then I forgot about it, so um, that's why I put it on the agenda today, so I don't forget about it.
That would've been last Monday, right?
Last, yeah, last Monday, um, had a team's meeting with them, very impromptu, scheduled it like that morning. Um, had very good conversation, I would say, um, but, long story short, one of the things we talked about was timeline in the process and kind of expectations from both sides. And I kinda hit that a little bit when we were talking about hiring an engineer, but there's three different processes across the border. And one of which, we did it on sixty sub four, but um, they had talked about potentially doing an informational meeting for the landowners, just to, not like a formal hearing like we typically do, but just to get everyone in the same room and have an opportunity to talk about the situation at hand without going into a ton of expense and a ton of details in that regard. But there, um, Fairbowl County, the Minnesota side, they are going to have their attorney in their county at that day. And initially, they did not think he'd be able to make it after we had talked about scheduling this, and then I believe they sent another email thinking that he might be able to now. So there's a potential that their attorney will be able to be there to try and bridge the gap between Minnesota and Iowa and work through some of the legalities that way. But timeline-wise, they said it would probably be two to three years at least for a project on their side by the time we jump through all.
That's what they said was typical on their side. One of the first things, and one of the reasons they have brought up having an informational meeting is that uh, there's not a lot of precedent for how to conduct a joint district between the two states. And one of the biggest questions that they had was whether or not a petition on the Iowa side was enough to facilitate and constitute a petition for their board to act upon. Uh, that was one of the big questions they were gonna have for the attorney.
And there's, there's substantial questions about that because of whether we do a repair project or an improvement project. And those are always very different processes on their side. And the like effort or time and all that required for it.
Right, what, what is it for a, for an improvement? They said it was, if it was over a quarter of their landowners, they need to petition for it? Is it twenty-six percent of their landowners have to petition for it, but then there's not?
Then it goes, it goes through DNR stuff, there's a cost benefit thing, but
Right.
If they kinda check the boxes and all those different criteria, there's really nothing that stops it on their side.
How big is the drainage district in Minnesota?
That was another thing that was discussed because there's, recently there was set up, uh, there, for the open ditch that this drains into. There is an agreement for essentially outlet fees for how that's paid for via the, the Iowa side. Uh, however, this tile itself was not addressed when that was, when that was set up. So we would know, within reason from the assessment schedule on the Iowa side, what was served. But they had said it was, the, the, the terms they had used were there were visible holes in the agreement that was set up that is serving these districts.
Well, their assessment schedule, that's not gonna do it benefit.
Well, right, yes.
So I mean, you gotta realize that there's people that are gonna be at this meeting that are gonna go, no, we're not gonna do it, because it has nothing to do with benefit.
Well, yeah, I.
I don't, I don't know if it has nothing to do with benefit, but it has, it has a different formula.
But there, there, it's, it, right, it's all based off of the, the viewers and how they.
How big is the area and everybody in the area gets taxed the same no matter what the benefit is?
Right, um, and so, uh, one of the things additionally we had discussed was they had not received any formal petition, but included, and I think this was in your board packets a couple weeks ago when we discussed, uh, when, when the appointment of engineers came up. But they had, the drainage authority in, uh, Fairbowl County had put together an actual, it wasn't a petition, but they recognized the issue. And they've actually, this is from there, just the county's drainage department, they had photos of, of drainage sections.
And, and that's what I was referring to, when I said there's significant differences in the sap and capabilities.
And, and maps, uh, profiles,
Capacity.
Capacities and cost estimates that they want to get the Minnesota landowners as well as the Iowa landowners together to discuss how, how jointly it moves together.
Yep, and, and the, the purpose for this meeting upfront is more so to get feedback from everyone as far as what they're interested in, what they're willing to pursue, that type of stuff. And that more so goes back to the repair or improvement, because that's two very different processes on their side. So we need to, um, get feedback from the landowners as far as what they're interested or willing to do. But when we appointed the engineer, you guys would've been able to see the email and comments on the petitions. So I, I relayed that to them and, um, it's, it's actually going to be a fairly informal hearing, so it, I, or informal meeting, so it's on the agenda for setting a date time, but it's, it's up to you guys if you'd like to attend or not. They said on the Minnesota side, they're only gonna have one of their commissioners, the one that actually represents that area, so they'll only have one there. Um, they're not going to have a full board or their full commission. So it's up to you guys, but for Marge to send out the notices and all that stuff, they actually, it would be good to.
So you're meeting in Minnesota, Fairbowl County Board?
No, the Eagle Center in Lakota.
And the Eagles, they're coming down?
They, they booked that, yep.
Yeah, we, we discussed, we wanted to have something that was, that was close for the, that was closest for the landowners. And then split the difference between the two counties.
Yep, we talked about Lakota or Elmore and they decided on Lakota, so. That's what we got, I guess. Anyone got questions or want more information?
They haven't appointed their three viewer yet or?
No, they, they have not.
That's a long ways down the road.
Yeah, they, they, because they have not yet received a petition, they, and that, that's what I say is the, they're wondering, does this one, if this is turned into them, does this count? Or not? Do they have to, would, would they have to receive one from a landowner? Would they themselves have to put one in? They already have this report from their county drainage department.
And, and that's where based on the discussion and conversation that could happen at this meeting, maybe we'll find someone that is willing to do that on the Minnesota side.
The last time we had issue with Minnesota, we had to have them filed in Minnesota and Iowa before they were happy.
Right, and so then that's, yeah, that, that's why we're going to this meeting to let people know that it, it's come up again. Uh, and the, and the drainage department is now recognizing the, the issue and would like to see something done. But yeah, we're, from their procedures, um, they're, they are a ways off yet from the, the viewers, um, they don't even.
They have to have a vote of the district whether to approve it before they appoint the viewers, that's what they did last time.
That, right.
Well, I think, I think that's all on their commissioners to make that decision.
They, uh.
Like anything to do with the landowners.
Yeah, they have to have a certain percentage that wanna go along with the project. They do things a lot different.
Well, that's, yeah, that's for the improvement side, I don't know if that's, it's the same for repair, but that's, that's where there's a lot of, there's a lot of beginning stage type conversations that we are having. And that's, that's the basis of.
So are you talking about doing repair?
We're talking about figuring out what path forward works. And landowners on our side that I have communicated with are not in favor of a repair, unless it's done on both sides, and even at that, it would be the last ditch effort, so to speak. I mean, they know, they know the line needs attention, but they'd much rather do an improvement while we are already doing the work.
Well, do a repair, you can't change the grade or the elevation of anything, so what would be the object of it is?
You could change the elevation.
You, you could, well, you could change its, you could change its, uh, horizontal positioning if that gained you cover.
Alignment, yep.
Yeah, you could, you could change the alignment so long as your capacity wouldn't change. And you can go, you can go deeper so long as your, again, your capacity isn't altered. Now, in this instance, with what depth or lack thereof, you'd be looking more at a horizontal alignment change, uh, but that would, that would bring the line back to its original intended capacity and hopefully get rid of the line that's causing holes.
And, and based on our conversations on the improvement side, I know for the other projects, we typically talk anywhere from half inch to three quarters to a one inch coefficient. They said if we went above, they said half inch was fairly standard for improvement projects there. But if we went above that, it would get increasingly difficult the higher we went, so.
Well, your tile will be on top of the ground.
Well, that, that for nothing else, but the, the regulatory from their standpoint would be.
We were, we were talking more technical and regulatory things on that side. When you get down to, would it actually be feasible to even build, that's, that's another topic, but not quite to that stage.
You want Marge to come to this meeting or how, who, who would you want to attend the meeting?
Well, I'll, I'll attend it for sure, Tyler and I guess it's up to anyone else if they want to or not. I don't think we would need minutes or any of that formally taking, it's more of a discussion and kind of working out beginning topics, I guess, I don't, do you have any other way to lay that out, Tyler?
No, um, I mean, I would certainly be taking notes on anything that, that happened. It may not be the worst to have a record of it having happened.
We need a record.
For, for the.
We're spending drainage district money.
Right, yeah, so having that in, I, I think, I think without a question, you need something in the minutes of it having occurred.
So are you willing to take the minutes and do that?
I, I.
To get it into the official?
I can, yes, yeah, certainly.
Then that's what would have to be in the motion?
I'll, if you have that.
It was February sixteenth. I don't know what, what time they actually settled on, had they said that in the, the notice? That, and that date was, was chosen based on when they thought their drainage attorney was going to be.
Available.
Available.
I don't remember, I don't remember if she sent that in the email or if he did.
I think you.
So Marge would send letters out to the landlord?
Uh, that's how I understand it, right?
We kinda didn't know what time it was.
Yeah, right, yeah, right, yes. Yeah, yeah. I have not, I have not been included, I don't think I've been included on any notice, information that they've sent.
So February, February sixteenth at one thirty PM in Eagle Center in Lakota.
So would that be your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second to your motion?
For an informational meeting.
Second. Thank you, my Carter. Any more discussion? Put it in, uh, motion that, uh, both of them make will take minutes and they will be put in, uh, record.
Yep, that's fine by me.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried, unanimous. You hear the DD four eleven?
Uh, no, I think the, I think the rest of that's, uh, without me, so.
I'll, uh, get out, have a good rest of the day. Don't leave. What's that? Don't leave, you know? So we got DD four eleven?
I should be here.
Yep, I'm trying to read it. We have a change order in here for DD four, lab eleven. Any questions on the change order? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve change order on DD four lab eleven? If there's no more questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried, unanimous.
Next is payout for four lab eleven.
Lot worse. Uh, next we have a payout for DD four lab eleven. It's in your folders, anybody have any questions on the payout?
So what, what does this mean? What's the payment?
So this is a, um, during, during the course of large projects that are engineered like this, they can do, um, pay requests on a, at the most, at a monthly basis. They don't always happen on a monthly basis, but they can request on a monthly basis, payment for the work that's been completed. So this is, this is showing it outlines, and you guys wouldn't have seen the first one, I don't remember when we approved the first one, but it would've been before the end of the year. But this is, this is basically a progress report for the work that's been completed. And like line seven, right, you'll see there's a retainage, we retain ten percent until of the work that's been completed until the end, that's paid after the completion hearing is accepted.
Okay.
Um, it shows change orders, it shows the original contract, change orders, what the revised contract is. Uh, you can go down the lines and see the work completed, and then under the front signature page, it's a little harder to read with it being sideways here, but it, it goes through the items that were bid on and shows how much of that was completed. So you can.
And if you look right here, so it shows this period.
Yep.
And that's the amount that they're requesting for this, for this payout.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's just, just a snapshot in time from the last payment.
Right, that's just the first time we had these.
Yep.
Oh, good, 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 good question. Yeah, if you can see the previous payment was twenty-one thousand.
Yep, yep.
And, and this year is, we're assuming that everything's done on the project now, because all that's left is the retainage of ten percent. So that just gives us where we're at.
Okay, yep.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the payout?
I'll make that motion.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Motion made a second, any more discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried, next. We got change order one, DD sixty sub one. Zach?
So I'll, I'll highlight a couple things here, there's a T in, on there for televising, which was discussed when we were going through bid letting with the plastic and all that. There's another T for connecting into the old main, which they, it was not, not really included in the plans that way, because, um, Ivesman had requested keeping the old mains, we had to hook into that. Then there is trench stabilization.
Real quick, so the T for the camera, that's just like a T section of the pipe that has, that goes up so you can.
Lower the camera, yeah. Yeah, so there's, there.
Okay, in a way, we're.
Well, and it'll, it'll be capped once they're done with that, which I believe that's already capped and kinda covered up and all buttoned up. Um, the other T would, it's same concept, it's a T, but that one will tie into the old main, so it'll be, it's like more horizontal instead of vertical. It's, it's the same, same piece of product, so to speak, but it's a different use.
Do a little bit differently.
Yep, so that's, that's why they're separated out a little bit. Then the trench stabilization rock, they, there was quite a bit of conversations about the manufacturer specifications for how the pipe would be installed. And when this was bid, that was one of the specifications, is over a certain depth, it would need to be bedded in rock. So there's rock that has been used, uh, in addition to what was planned originally, so this includes.
Something running into some soils that didn't.
There was, there was very poor soils. And I, I know there's, Zach is taking some pictures, I've taken pictures when I've been up there, the engineers have taken pictures. But, I mean, there's, there's stuff that was running like sand.
Yeah, it was just unforeseen things until you get down there, so it makes sense.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion to approve the change order?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the change order, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried, next we are up two. Approve payout three for DD sixty sub one. Payout number three.
Yep, so this would be similar to the one on four lot eleven, kind of a progress snapshot. Um, this has the amount due as forty-seven and a half thousand, shows previous payments and stuff, so.
And that includes that change order?
Yep, it does, that's shown on the left side.
Any other questions on? Motion to approve?
Still moving.
Motion by Specter, do I have a second?
Second.
Which one?
Carter. I'll, I'll, I'll look at you next time.
Have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried, unanimous. Then we have a drainage district repair request. And it was Kyle, if I remember.
I don't think so.
No, it's yours.
Is it mine? I thought I read Kyle's name on it.
I, I did, I received, I received a call and I filled out the request, but it's, it's just south of my district by a mile.
That's why I seen your name.
Yep.
No, okay. Oh.
Yeah, so Steven, Steven called me about a beaver dam out there.
You know how deep it is?
No idea, I have not looked at it.
Oh, I'll look at it, decide if you could do it, if we need a long stick or.
I think it's, I think it's fairly close to the road, so, but I'm not sure how. Yeah, I'm not sure how deep the ditch is there, so yeah, you'll have to check it out.
Yeah, you'll have to see, see what we need for equipment.
Right.
So I'll get back to you, Marge. Do I have a motion for the supervisor to do their drainage repair request?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by what? Specter?
I'll second. I'll second.
Specter? Any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Discussion with county auditor.
Okay, um, first thing I wanna talk about is I applied for a ten, a hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, it's called LATCF grant, it's Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, and it's part of, um, American State Plan. None of certain counties were eligible, and Zieg County was one of them. Um, part, we will receive it in two trenches like we did ARPA fifty thousand dollars each. Um, I have not heard anything back yet, if we were approved or not, um, but I'm assuming we will be, because we've already took this route. So pretty much we just have to apply for it, so, um, I'm just waiting to get word back and, and maybe we'll receive separate grants.
So does that kinda fall under the ARPA funds, or is that separate?
It would be separate than ARPA, but it'll be, it's pretty much, um, kind of on the same lines, it can be used for, you know, government uses.
Yeah, when, when Paulie was going through the eligible uses, I got that in the email, which forwarded to him, I mean, there's a wide range of things we can do with it, I mean, we could use it a thousand different ways, so it's just a thousand dollars.
Yeah, cool, so, um.
So since that's separate from ARPA, would there be, be a different permission to handle the request?
No, you don't have to set up, we didn't have to set up one for ARPA either, I just wanted to do that because, to help take the burden off of me, because I have too much other stuff to deal with that.
Okay, so you would handle requests on this in one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of
That was a lot more.
One, one thing of a hundred thousand, and just find a place to use it up, I would say. I don't think we should break it out by ten different things or anything, and just find a, find a place to use it.
With the number of, uh, with security going upstairs, it might be a good place to put it, because Frank had, when I got it, I just burned eight doors. And then they want someone with a glass door replaced, so that might be something to look at, but I mean, it more just an idea. So I, I, Derek and I got it together and talked about that, we just gotta put some numbers together. Maybe that would be a place to start, since we know we need to do something with security.
Yep, right, yep.
Just, that's just an idea, yes.
Yep. Another quick question while we're talking about security, um, anybody looked at putting more signs up going up the stairs yet, or?
Um, no, I just need to know what you want them to say, I'm very well.
So I think, do, I mean, do we need to have an agenda for it, or?
No. No, I can make those decisions on my own.
Okay.
So, but if you guys have ideas, let me know and.
I would suggest, um, both entrances, so that it gives people a chance that, you know, if they're walking in, they know they're gonna go to the third floor, they see that sign, they can turn. I would suggest, um, both entrances, so that way it gives people a chance that, you know, if they're walking in, they know they're gonna go to the third floor, they see that sign, they can turn and go back to their car. And, you know, put it away.
So I think it's talking like on the doors, on the grounds?
On the doors, yeah, yep.
What, you want it to say no guns on the third floor?
Yeah, weapons prohibited on the third floor.
Yeah, what, what?
Okay, more general.
Yeah.
Does that include pocket knives?
Well, um, I believe it's clarified, i- i- if a knife is over six inches, it's considered a weapon. So pocket knives probably not. But yeah, if it's a high knife or something like that, obviously that can be considered a weapon.
At, at the end of the day, if people have questions, I mean, you're not gonna put all that.
No, no.
So at the end of the day, if people have questions, they're gonna have to ask someone, I guess, it's either someone on this floor, or they go upstairs to be like, what's allowed here? But it's not something you're gonna put on a sign either way.
And then I would say.
One of the stairway, when you.
Yeah, well.
I would suggest a one by the stairs here.
Yep, that's what I was gonna say.
Are you gonna mount that, I guess?
Well, so you know where you go up the stairs and you turn left to keep going upstairs? Slap it on that wall right there, you know, there's nothing else on that wall, so.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it up there, I'd put it on the second floor here, so before you start up the stairs to the.
Well, and my thought is.
Is it all turning? Right to your right.
Yeah, as you, as you turn the corner, you look at the wall as you're going upstairs, it would be, it would be visible on the wall just to the west.
You can see it. Could we call it a.
Could we do a hole, just to cover that basis?
Yeah.
It depends how much it costs, I mean, I don't mind spending a lot of money on something.
I mean.
I, I would.
That one is sufficient.
I, I wouldn't put another one on the landing with one down here, I would say the entrances plus a final reminder as you go upstairs, because.
I, yeah, I was just thinking.
Once you get, once you get up the stairs, you're kind of in the middle of the second and third floor, so it's technically you're not on the third floor yet.
The reason I was saying that was because there's nothing on that wall there, so having a sign like that would definitely stand out, and you get up to that second floor, you're turning left regardless, so that wall is right in front of your face. So that's why I was just kind of suggesting it, but that's fine, if you guys wanna do it on the landing here on the second floor.
I mean, you'll be, you'll be turning here.
Right.
Because either, so that, I just, it'd be, it'd be earlier, it'd be one less, you have half light of stairs to go up.
But if you miss the sign at the door.
So, yeah, I would, I would say just right here, bottom of the stairs.
Uh, I would agree with that.
Thank you.
So you're gonna use those buns for the signs too?
No, no, that was a fun at my courthouse.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
I would think that we just find all for the doors.
Um, Ron and Willie will do whatever they usually do, I leave that up to them, like they.
Cardstock and marker?
No. No, 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 no.
A single piece of paper out of.
Just make sure they use stencils.
No, no, they, they have stuff that they use for all the windows and stuff, so I'll let them take care of that.
Okay. Okay.
Shouldn't, shouldn't be too complicated.
Um. And then, um. I sent you an email, I think, a week or two ago, uh, President's Day, February twentieth, so courthouse is closed. Except for our office, because of the election on March seventh, we are, by state law, ordered to be open the twentieth of February, so my office does not get President's Day off, I have to be open until five o'clock Friday. So although the courthouse will be closed, technically it will be open, so people can still come to our office. So, um. Just so you're aware of that. Working on budgets, um. It's really hard to get everything done as long as time I know, it put a lot of pressure on the department heads, I still don't have worksheets back from some of them with their wages. So I guess they'll be bringing them to you today, but I wouldn't have opened them again, so we'll kind of just work through it and see what happens. Um, and that's all I got.
Kurt? Um. I did your connections meeting last Tuesday afternoon, uh, over in Evansburg, and. I, I thought I had my paper, but I did not, but from what I can remember, um, they're still in the process of constructing the facility over there at Spencer, um, for a twenty-three hour crisis. Uh, intervention center and, uh, in conjunction with the hospital there. Um, and, yeah, they've been, they've done a lot of good things with that, you know, already just. Serving the mental health of, of North Iowa, and I had a call last week from a lady that needed to talk to her supervisor, and that's what it was in regards to, and. And, uh, was able to get her the help she needed through, through that, so it's good to make those connections and meet the board and, and, and do that, so. That was, I was, uh, those old meetings I had.
John?
I had a couple.
Yeah, you had a lot of meetings there.
Yeah, um. Well, the first one was the Kusutakana development, we kind of went over some of the results from the study that was done. Um, we just kind of reviewed that and discussed some different things about different industries that we can kind of recruit into our area, um. There was some discussion about with cities, having to do some stuff with their, their pipe testing. They, you know, they all kind of came down from the Flint, Michigan thing where, you know, they have to go in and test all the, the pipes for lead and things like that, and. Wasn't quite sure how that all kind of fell under the economic development, but there was some discussion on that.
It was just a status update, probably.
Yeah, yeah. So, and then. The EMA, uh, Commission of Med, and kind of briefly went over the budget, approved the budget, and then. Uh, just kind of had some other discussion about. Other future things, um, not much to talk about there, and then. The E nine one one meeting right after that. Um, there's radios that were handed out for, I can't remember the exact term that they, they called it. Uh, but it had to do with like for emergency notifications and things like that, and we were talking about kind of giving those for schools and things like that as well. Um. They were also discussing the. It's a. Kind of hard to explain, but it basically uses the ability to use video on your phone when you call nine one one. That you can allow the, the phone to do video back to the dispatch, there's some discussion on implementing that, um. I think that was major topics, we also went over the budget for E nine one one and approved that.
Ron?
Um, EMS meeting last week. Phil's here, I don't know if he wants to hit any highlights, but obviously the bylaws, we already talked on. There was a bit of discussion about the agreement with the hospital and, um. Bill and I had a conversation with Dar Friday afternoon. And she, she remained steadfast that they don't have money available for the EMSS, and they are very concerned, their board is very concerned that. That's double dipping tax dollars, um, they said they talked to their attorney about that, I asked if they talked to the attorney general or anything like that, they had not. But, um, at the end of the day, that will be an impact to the planned budget, so we will. Have to try and. Do things a little more creatively to maintain the level of service and do it cheaper, which. Obviously good to do anyway. Otherwise. That's probably the main points there, did anything else jump out you felt? Okay. Um, then Friday morning, C I J D C meeting, um. There, uh, it was a long meeting for the first one in the year, since there's several new board members, we explained things substantially in depth on quite a few things. One, one issue we're running into is D R I, is disability rates by Iowa. They get their powers from federal legislation, but it's a state thing, and they come in and basically. Limit how we handle the juveniles that are there, and what. What punishments, so to speak, can be used or how they can be handled, and it makes it very difficult for our staff, which. Is one of the reasons we are doing this new building. The timeline on that has been pushed out to March now, and. There's potentials that might not even be done by then, but we are going to look into, have conversations with our attorney to see if there's anything we can do to. Be a little more aggressive on the timeline, because it was supposed to be done already, so. Um, there's that, the next meeting, we will have. Proposed twenty eighty changes and bylaw changes. Um, most of that is. The actual pages. So on the, on the twenty eighty, it has, um. Language under appointments to the commission that each county shall appoint a county supervisor as commission member and alternate at their annual meeting. And there, Tony had shared that there's. A number of counties that only appoint the delegate, and then they have the rest of the board as alternate, but they don't formally appoint them, so to speak, it's just. If the delegate can't go, they send someone else. So we talked about changing that to May appoint an alternate, because. I mean, Tony said he kind of gets to the point of he's trying to police his bosses, so it, it just. We, we opened up, or we talked about opening up a little bit of flexibility in that regard. Then there was a little bit of clarification as far as that same topic on the bylaws, and then there was talk about the executive committees, we added. Added some things there and. Made some clarifications, but all good changes, I would say, so. That sums up that one.
I had a great reading last Wednesday, uh, we got four Senate file bills. About bike line, that applies to us all the way from. Requires them to tell who's investing in it, and another one says it's gonna take the right eminent domain away from the I U B and put it underneath the hands of. Legislature, and, uh, another one is they have to have ninety percent of the landowners sign up for it before they go through that farm bureau.
For eminent domain, yeah.
Before they can use eminent domain.
Yeah.
Uh, we added a new county, Story County, uh, so far the antels look good, they're right on track from being halfway through the year.
Added, added story as a member now.
Yeah. Annual meeting went well, I didn't get to attend. Uh. Not the newer entrance. Except. An old engineer is definitely in the end to help counties do drainage repairs. Um. Spencer.
Ed, Ed. Edler, Don Edler.
Yep, and Don is, he likes to mess and everything.
I couldn't. I couldn't spit it out anyway.
Yeah.
So, that's all I have, uh, next week.
I don't think there's anything on the agenda.
Zach's not gonna be here next week?
Yeah, he will be here next week.
He will be, are you gonna be here?
Um, yeah, I believe so.
Okay, next week is, so, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I don't have anything on the agenda yet next week yet, but that will change.
Um, one thing, just quick discussion point, we'll keep, or, keep doing time, but, um, then I had a couple people approach me about. If budget sessions could be recorded to the public, being it is public as well.
We never had before.
I, I realize that. I, I was asked, and I said I would bring it up. Um. Is that, I mean, being it is how we are spending the public's money, I'm not opposed to it. Is that something we could look into, or, or, or no, I guess, that's.
And I was, I mean, I was. I had that on my mind when we were getting started with this, and then I forgot to do it the first budget one we had until halfway through, so then I was like, well, start in the middle, we got. Criticism from both sides, so I had not at that point, but I don't see any issue with it.
I don't know everyone's thoughts around that. I had said I would probably bring it up, I was not sure how that was handled.
When you talk about wages, do you want that? But the end number is public number, but is there an issue in the discussion part?
So.
If you're talking about competency of people.
I.
Well, that was my, that was my biggest concern.
That's, that's my concern.
Yeah, and I had thought about that too, at the end of the day. If someone walked in while we were having budget workshop, we can't close the door and tell them to go out, so. It's, it's not a closed session, if there is things that we were evaluating competency of an employee, they could request a closed session for that. But yeah, I did, I did have that same thought.
It was out of court.
Yeah.
What?
Is, is that something? Do we need to have yoga? Is that something that you?
I think you can go down, you're the one.
Yeah, that's what I, I, I know, I know, that's why I'm bringing it up.
And, but in the, in the future, in, in our reality, it might be something better to plan for next year. To look ahead.
We can discuss about it.
We have more time to plan that appropriately, I mean, if we, if we go through all this stuff today. And then all of a sudden you have one recording of our budget discussions, I don't know.
Is it fair to the presenters not to know that they're going to be recorded in their discussion? That's one, that's just kind of asking your opinion, if they know they're gonna be.
Well, I mean, it's not like we're trying to hide anything.
No, it's not bad, but.
For today, for today, no, but if we give them enough notice, and then the budget meetings are gonna start being recorded, then absolutely they'll have.
Discussions we can have in the coming year, yeah, yeah.
It would, it would probably be easier, easier to plan going forward than starting midstream like this.
Yeah.
So as far as today, probably not, but. We can put it on the agenda for. Next year.
Next year?
Well, I mean.
Well, a little sooner, you know, maybe we, maybe we can discuss that in October or something.
Yeah.
Remind.
We put it on like.
December.
Probably. November, because if we start having, well, maybe November here.
Probably this year.
No, because sometimes we have budget stuff come up in the upper, so maybe we just do it at the end of October and have. That decided before going into.
Uh, it, it would probably be better to have a decision on that, like midsummer or earlier, that way, if anyone does want to have a conversation about their. Employment or whatever, that way, it would give them ample time to get on the agenda in that regard.
But.
So we're on that hearing today, we gotta get started.
Yeah.
Set, yeah, we're working this time.
Yep.
Well, I, I don't, I, I think it would reflect orderly to start that midstream for this year.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I just bring, I just brought it up.
But I, I definitely don't want the public to think we're hiding anything, because they are open to it.
What about August first? Put it on the agenda for August first?
Good luck, thanks to you.
I will be gone.
You will be gone?
You already know that.
I do. How about, yeah, I'll be in Milwaukee.
How about that fall event?
How about that fall convention, for sure.
It's gonna be great to be here in Milwaukee.
Following week?
Following week.
August eighth.
Could do that.
Saturday's coming.
You just just got done writing it, didn't you?
Unfine whatever we do, I don't care. So we're persistent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because when we get in trouble is when we're not consistent. So who's first one?
We want it here.
Oh, yeah, I'll make questions at your second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.